All right, welcome to the May 13th Worcester City Schools Board of Education Work Session. Amy, can you please call the role? Starcher here.
Shans.
Here.
Kuzma.
Here.
Goodright.
Here.
Kleinhead.
Here.
All right, so we do not have any new business in the consent agenda or reports. Nothing in the regular agenda, so we move right to a motion to suspend Robert's rules of order.
So moving, second.
Shans?
Yes.
Goodright?
Yes.
Kuzma?
Yes.
Kleinhead?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mrs. Starcher. Yeah, we don't have a report tonight or anything. Overall, really the purpose for me and then if anybody else has anything tonight is to just go over some things with the agenda next week. And then also need for executive session tonight, so that'll be something that we'll do. We won't take action afterwards, but there'll be executive session. So I can go over some things with next week's board meeting. Also, just maybe, I know everybody here knows, but also maybe say a few reminders from our special meeting that we had the other day as well. So in terms of recognitions, we'll have student recognitions, we'll also have robotics, and we'll have recognition of retirees. And that's something neat that we do here that we did not do in my previous district. We bring in our retirees and recognize them and their supervisor, principal will share a few words about them. So that's a great thing, so we have a lot of people to honor here coming up here next week. So I would assume the first part of the meeting will be busy and packed as we have gotten used to. Amy, anything you want to mention on your financial reports there?
Nope, no, nothing new, just we'll have some new funds that we're bringing to the board. Did you want me to talk about my regular agenda or just?
Sure, if you want, I mean, you can, we can jump back around.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
We're a work session, so.
Go crazy.
Yeah. So we'll bring my February forecast, the May update to you that I've been working on. We're meeting with the BAC Finance Committee Wednesday, just to present it to them as well and then have it to you next Tuesday. And then the E-Rate Consulting Services, which are category one, right? Because I already brought two. And might have a couple resolutions. I'm actually, I'll talk about it with my forecast, but one of the things that I've been looking at is to create a couple new funds. One is a severance fund, which would mean that I would transfer money into that fund every year for when we pay out severance to retirees. And then a capital projects fund. So as we've been talking about improvements within the district in different projects, Brian and Gabe have put together a list, transferring money into that fund at the end of every year or during the year, so we can start managing things out of that fund for capital projects. So that'll be a part of my forecast, might have some resolutions this meeting or the next one, I'm not sure when it will be. But I think that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Amy. I noticed we had a lot of donations again, as we constantly do. And be excited to have you share about the forecast. And it looks like we're going to continue to be beneficial for the year and positive. And then we're able to do some adjustments. And as Amy said, we are starting to do some planning and impact our forecast purposefully with some of our larger facility projects. Obviously not the new building, but trying to utilize some of the funds that we have to do some of the renovation or repair work. That is just part of what you have to do in, you know, operating, you know, seven buildings. So that'll be a good thing. And that maybe brings me, just as if anybody's watching, we did do a special meeting recently, a couple weeks ago, to approve the things necessary in order to finish the pool project this summer. As that's kind of our big project for the summer. That includes the large HVAC units, which were quite expensive, but they're so big in terms of what they have to do in that auditorium space. We'll also be painting the pool, draining the pool, obviously then refilling it and doing some valve work as well, so.
Will it be down for a long period of time?
Probably about two months-ish. We're hoping to get started right at the first of June and, you know, trying to finish by early August. We've worked with the city, they're aware and, you know, I think they may try to keep their pools open a couple more weeks if we do.
That's a good idea.
If we're, if we get delayed in any way. There'll be at least one day where we'll pretty much shut down the entire west part of the building as we have to put the, to put the units on the roof. Literally, I think, how many semis is Mr. Madigan?
Twelve to sixteen.
Twelve to sixteen semis in order to get everything here, to put the crane in and stuff, so.
Yours hasn't even got the unit.
I thought they did this over the helicopter.
So that was, you know, that's an example of how we'll be using some of that money in that forecast, so. On my consent agenda, we have no retirements, resignations, which at this point in the year I'm happy with as we're starting to, you know, kind of move forward. Lots of activity, though, on our certified personnel, some summer school, which, you know, very much appreciate. We also have a couple new teachers on there, Maria Young, who has done a nice job in sixth grade math most of the year as a sub for us. And she is going to take a full-time position. Mary Watson as a kindergarten teacher and Emily Jewell as a contract sub for the year in second grade. And the reason that that's a contract sub and says projected enrollment numbers is we have a bubble right now in Parkview where we have a pretty small enrollment in first grade where they only need two teachers. And so when Ms. Lepla moved to our tech role, which she was a second grade teacher, we only need, we need it this year in second grade, we won't next year. So that's why it's a contract sub position. Again, same, same job, same compensation, just we don't know if we need the position the year after, so that's why it's considered a contract sub. Also, a lot of administrative as the typically, and we did again this year, April is when we do our certified contracts for teachers, all the renewals. And then this year is when we do the, I'm sorry, this month is when we do the administrative renewals. So there are people that are on here, so there's, there's a lot of administrators that are being renewed right now in one way or another. But there's a rhyme and reason why whether they're on the agenda specifically or if they're just on the admin contracts PDF at the bottom. If they're a typical renewal, this has been the way it's always been on our board agendas, they are just put on there as a recommendation for their renewal based on the contract years that they're awarded per the administrative manual. If they are in a new position, which we have some people that are moving into new positions, or if their position is changing, the position that they're in currently, we have, those are either contract addendums if it's there within their contract, or if they're into a new position, it would be a new contract, but they are specifically placed on there, right? So I'm just going to bring your attention to a couple of those pieces. So in order to better solidify our curriculum instruction department, and honestly, at the free time also, provide Mr. Madigan in the assistant superintendent role the flexibility he needs to manage. As Mr. Madigan manages all of our facility projects and does a lot of our HR for us. So in order to do that, we've kind of changed a few roles that we think actually will streamline things and also work in obviously people's strength. And so, for example, so Molly Richard was our director of elementary ed, she's done a great job. We are increasing her responsibilities to be the director of curriculum and instruction for the entire district instead of just the elementary, right? Now, we are providing her support as we just recently hired an elementary coordinator to work with her. So kind of in her department, that would be Jocelyn Shinavive, who is a teacher for us and been a reading teacher. And she's going to do a great job in that position. And then Sarah Crooks, who has been a curriculum coordinator for us, primarily focusing on secondary, will kind of serve in the secondary role. On top of that, Mrs. Crooks is helping us, going to take over gifted services for us, as that is something we've outsourced to the ESC in the past, which, no problem with that, ESC's done a nice job. And we're large enough that we can really serve and do that in-house, and so it makes sense to do that. So their department, you know, is those three, and then that will allow Mr. Madigan also to focus on a couple other, you know, pieces that we know are pretty significant. And obviously, we also, you know, are anticipating at some point a large building project as well in our district, so.
So, so the, like for those curriculum people, do Jocelyn and Sarah both do seven and eight? Or is there a cutoff between?
Good question. So, I mean, they'll collaborate, but our vision is Jocelyn's really pre-K to five. Because even though our Edgewood is currently the fifth grade, we kind of view that as the elementary and Sarah's six twelve. And then Molly kind of oversee both of them in those roles. And then Mrs. Davis, the reason she's on here is that she's moving into a new contracted role. She's been here two years as an assistant principal. She's staying an assistant principal, however, Mr. Rubino resigned, and so she's moving into his role, right? And so more days and obviously than compensation that applies with that. A last one of note here is Mr. Steiner. So again, it's not a change in his job, he's already the associate principal. The thing we did was when, so when Mr. Rubino left, he was an associate principal. We decided to instead make two assistant principals instead of two associates. Not because Mrs. Davis or anybody else couldn't have been an associate. I've kind of come from previous districts where it was kind of beneficial to have at a school building this size, which has about 160 employees, a clear number two, so when the principal isn't here, which happens sometimes, they kind of know where that falls. And Mr. Steiner has done a great job, he's been here, you know, about five, six years in that role. And so he's going to be the only associate principal, and then we'll have two assistants. And then we also increased, because of all the busyness that happens up here during the summer, he is going to be what we call a 260-day employee instead of a 231, which just, what's that mean? And I won't say the real world, because this is the real world, but in outside of education, a 260-employee is somebody that works you around, right? So in education, there's lots of different, you know, based on what's needed there. So those are some of the things of note here for us, we've tried to be purposeful. Combination of utilizing people's strengths, trying to be efficient, use our resources as well. And so those will be obviously on the agenda next week. On the classified side, no, again, no resignations, retirements, but we do have some people moving into positions here as well or increasing, you know, time due to need there. As Dolores Lorenz is the administrative assistant for Molly's team, and so she, we tried that part-time when we first posted it. It's always been a full-time position, and it just, the need is there for a full-time person. So she's moving into full-time as it had been for a long time. Outside of employment, all of the handbooks for next year will be on. You're noticing, we're purposeful in this, these are coming to you sooner. We want these to get out to families sooner and actually then be able then to be a part of their final forms registration, even if they can click that they've read those and those things. So not a lot of changes on really any of them. The elementary probably had the biggest change, and it was primarily just making sure they all had common language between the four buildings with like literally me and PBIS and things like that. But no real changes outside of that, but we have them on here every year for you. So those are the handbooks. Also, the fees, makes sense to do them a little earlier, so I'm going to start trying to bring those in May as well. Not a lot of changes, there are a couple though, and I will make note of those real quick here. So we made two main changes. One, remember, we only have fees in high school classes, all right? And they're pretty much for elective classes only. As right before I got here, fees were close to eliminated on purpose due to kind of where we were financially and the ability to do that. And so, you know, we have very few fees and I'm glad about that. The two that, the two changes we have is we have decided to move to a $5 technology fee for the year, and that will be in place of the $30 insurance that you can purchase for your Chromebook. Based on data that Alex did, he did a great job with it, $5 per student will really protect and provide for the district from a standpoint of breakages and things like that. Part of that's that Chromebooks are cheaper to fix. A lot of that's though, also that Ben Ott and his team of students, they fix a lot of it in-house. But $5 will take care of that for the year, and so we felt, you know, that was a better way to do that than the $30. And it wasn't just a money thing, but also it's like, you know, getting the insurance collected, whether it happened before it broke or after it, it was kind of a complicated thing. The other thing you're going to see of note here is the tier, the instrument rental procedures for band, okay? Overall, you are going to see that these are a increase in rental fees for our instruments. I can explain why that is, and I think that's important. This is not to make our kids pay more money to the district for band instruments. Overall, the last two years, we have spent about $50,000 replacing a lot of our band instruments. That's a good thing, but it also then leads to more of our kids wanting to use those, which is also a good thing. However, we don't have enough band instruments for every student to use our instruments, as most bands do not, right? And what is happening at times is kids are using our instruments when they, for about the same price, could go out to Pellegrino's or Larry's and get an instrument that would be at least as high quality, maybe even higher. Our instruments are, they're not bad, but they're kind of entry-level instruments, right? And so if a student or family has the ability to do that, it's better off for them. They're probably going to get a high-quality instrument. On top of that, we need to keep our instruments with us for our students that truly need it, right? As I remember, not that by any means we would always be very careful not to let people know of who has our instruments, who doesn't, things like that, because they're sensitive to that for a variety of reasons. But if you were on free and reduced lunch, you don't pay student fees, right? And so, you know, this way we can ensure that, you know, students that need our fee, or need our instruments are able to get it easily. The other thing you'll notice in the more expensive instruments are what we would call color instruments. We do have a rental option for color instruments, and that's on purpose because you can't hardly rent like some of the large color instruments at local, and if you do, they're really expensive, and we don't want that. So we are also, that's that tier two of instruments where, you know, we want people to be able to, you know, this would be like a bassoon or, you know, a large bass for orchestra or, you know, things like that that just are not going to make financial sense for a family. So I really, the music department did a great job of collecting this data and thinking of a way that they could do this. Because what you can't do and what you would never do is say, all right, those that, those that, those that need the payment here over here, like you don't do those things. So how will we be able to do this in a way where just organically would occur? We feel like this would do it. So that's a change that, you know, you'll see on there. And one more change from fees is lunch and breakfast. So we have not changed our fees for lunch or breakfast since pre-pandemic, which I think is pretty amazing and considering inflation's done what it has. And the increase here is very minimal. We are at this point, so food service is, you're supposed to, I mean, it's like its own independent, you know, we're not, we shouldn't be paying for food service as a district. At the same time, you're not trying to make a giant profit, it's kind of supposed to be a pretty much a net equal. We are losing money per year right now in food service. We have a, kind of, we have some in the reserve from positive years, but that's going to go away pretty soon with some of the larger equipment that we have to purchase for the kitchen. And so this is a very modest increase that we think will raise, you know, between $10,000 and $15,000 next year. So it'd be 10 cents for breakfast and 5 cents for lunch. Again, it's really small, but still, that does matter over a period of a year.
Do we have big deficits for students who don't pay their lunch bills? Is that a big issue for us?
It is, it is. We have, you know, it's, where it really becomes problematic now for some, it's just, they just don't pay it and then they need to pay it at the end of the year. Or it could be like, you know, a family I knew, maybe that is me, that I didn't know my son was charging his lunch for a while. But where it's hard, and this is why we really try to promote and encourage people to make sure they fill out their free and reduced lunch forms, is what'll happen, this is the ones that are really hard, is, okay, a family will not fill out their free and reduced lunch forms until like November, and they'll qualify. That's great, you can't go back.
Can't do it retroactively.
Right, so if they, if they, you know, and technically those fees then still exist.
Right.
And so we do have some of those. It's better, I think, this year, but in general, post-pandemic, when everybody got used to free food.
Right.
We have seen an uptick in just people, you know, and we want, we want them to eat our lunches. But yes, that is, that's a challenge for us and others.
Yeah, I got one of those bills that was so high that I thought my son was buying like the entire school lunch every day.
Yes. Well, I thought mine was packing his lunch, because I would see him with a packed lunch, but apparently that wasn't enough.
So does this get us closer to cost neutral?
Yeah, we believe that, we believe this will be closer to cost neutral. We may honestly, next year, we wanted to go really slow to start, because it's been a while. We may have to come to you with another one next year, especially with where we are with inflation. Overnight trips, anytime we do overnight trips, those are on the agenda for your approval. Some of the job descriptions for some of the positions that we just referred to, anytime we change those, we want to make sure that we have those accurate for you. MOU for goodwill, approval for LEAP for next year, anything we do with special education, you know, those agreements, those contract agreements. We don't, that's just to use, it doesn't mean that there's a certain number of kids that have to go. If a kid needs to go, they would be able to go. And then lots of first-reading policies. Overall, it was actually a pretty mundane policy update. Like a lot of them, most of the ones with transportation are just to make sure you say, no van, you say vehicle other than a bus, and then it changes a lot of those. On the termination and resignation is things is it clarifies how you can get that information to an employee, provides an option for that to be electronic with a red receipt. The third-grade reading guarantee is really just aligning with House Bill 33, with all the things with the Exlexia law and the science of reading. The revised employment substitution allows us to pay substitutes that are student teaching currently, as well as if they qualify for that. So I, obviously, I've only done this a few years, but this was the shortest update, I think, in my time.
I think you got improved service from your Neil or Rapo.
Well, we did get.
Significant change.
So, so yeah, so that's, that's the, and those will be first reads. So you will technically approve those one additional time in June before they would become official. The only thing I have on my regular agenda right now that I felt was unique enough, that was not something that I would want to put on the consent, was, and I wanted partly to be able to bring attention to it, is that we have engaged with a speaker on cybersecurity and cyberbullying and technology from the Safe Social Network, and he will be here on March 5th. And so he's a pretty, pretty renowned speaker, he's going to speak to our middle and high school students. Felt that was definitely a need, Mr. Gary actually set that up, and so we're excited to bring him in. I think we would want to anyway, as it's an interest, our strategic plan defined that as something that we wanted to make sure that we tried to help kids focus on is, there's so many, and there's so many different aspects of that, from identity theft to, you know, inappropriate content, to extortion that happens. I mean, there's just a lot, and he'll cover a lot of those topics with our students.
It might be helpful, I don't know if the speaker presents it, or make, could make this available to send something home for parents too. Because I know parents are very confused about.
Yes.
All the different places these things can happen, what the law is, you know, their kids getting charged when they just thought they were sending an interesting picture, you know, that kind of thing.
We do think we're going to be able to send some things home. We actually discussed having him for an evening thing as well, obviously that costs more. We went away from it more because those aren't really well-attended sometimes, and sometimes those are the, those are the people that are already paying attention. But we will put out some information, and I think we'll do some other things. And one of the things the tech department already does is once a month to all staff and students, they put out kind of a cyber thing, they just kind of share some of the stuff, you know, different things each month that I, you know, I even leave work from as well, so. So I think there could be a few more things added, especially on the employment side, is more continuing to interview and offer positions. But this should be, this should be, I think, close to the gist of it.
Very good.
Yeah, it was, yeah, big, yeah, big agenda.
Any questions or comments for Gabe on the agenda for next week? Any other comments, anything else that you want to bring up? We obviously have graduation, I think senior recognitions Wednesday night, right? And then graduation Sunday, so, before our next board meeting, so.
Yeah, yes, oh, that's right, that's, we've got a very busy weekend, but prom went really well. Everybody safe, always, always excited to hear that. So graduation, yes, 11 o'clock. We'll talk, you guys, you know, if you guys can be there around 10, we'll get you all set up and I'll show you, I'll tell you where everything is and things like that.
We should, we should meet in the office, right?
Yeah, we'll meet in the office.
At what point do you say, I looked at the weather already and it looks like it could be rainy, what, at what point do you make the decision?
So they prepare, they prepare regardless. And part of that's they practice it inside. And we will have it ready in the gym if needed. Honestly, we would make that decision as soon as, as soon as possible, but we'll probably hold out as long as we can. Unlike a snow day, this is one of those ones that we're ready, but it's so much nicer outside for a better reason. Because it limits even the number of people that can come in.
Right.
But we'll be prepared for that, yeah.
All right.
I know it's not looking as clear as what I would like this many days out.
And Friday morning's the BAC review?
Yes, yes, BAC year review is Friday. And so a few of those committees have been really active this year, a few not as much, which is natural. Some years they're really active and other years they're not. But always appreciate everybody being willing to help out with that.
Anything else from anybody?
I do have a question for Gabe.
Yeah.
So the contract sub thing.
Yeah.
That's a person that was not full-time, bringing in the contract sub, is that what that was?
No, it depends, so we have free, so we have.
I'm trying to remember what the contract sub, what rights that.
The contract sub is, so there's two ways to be a contract sub.
Yeah.
The one way is you just end up working in the same position more than 60 days and we didn't know it. And that's, that's when law kicks in and you get that. If we know we're going to need you more than 60 days, but we don't think the position is going to be there next year. So a lot of times that's maternity, you know, things like that, we will hire it as a contract sub, which means that they're paid the same as a regular teacher insurance, they're actually a part of the, you know, negotiated agreement. The only thing, the only difference is, is that you are, you are not guaranteeing them employment the following year, and so.
Because, because you're not guaranteeing them employment because you don't want to, or because?
Because of either the personal maternity leaves coming back.
Right.
Or like in this situation, we aren't going to need a third second grade at Parkview the year after that.
But the district, you might have an opening, would that contract sub have the opportunity for that first, or they'd have to be in line like everybody else?
They would have to bid on it.
Okay, what do you mean bid?
Like they would have to put their name in to be considered, go through the interview process. But I tell contract subs, and this is a great one, she's outstanding, we only have one elementary opening this year. And so I, you know, I, is, there's nothing better than a full year of interviewing, you know? So like, for example, we had a contract sub, Amanda Jordan at Cornerstone. This year, she was on your agenda last month as a full-time hire, so.
But they don't have, a contract sub wouldn't have any rights towards seniority?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, so that's kind of how that works. It just depends on how long we're going to be in the position. And it just depends on how long we're going to be in the position that defines it. Any other questions, guys?
All right.
Well, I do need a executive session.
So need a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Okay, Kleinhans?
Yes.
Goodright?
Yes.
Kuzma?
Yes.
Shant?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.